Just a reminder to everyone, good evening first of all. If you're not speaking, please mute your devices. So as we have to minimize any interruptions, thank you. This meeting of Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 breakout.
Yes.
Please mute your devices. It may be a caller, can someone mute the callers, please? Thank you. This meeting of Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to being in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view the meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on a record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Secretary, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Hello. Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Hello.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Absent.
Commissioner Mercado.
Absent.
Commissioner Sebo.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all those affected and/or lost the COVID-19 virus, which in Essex County is 2,525 souls lost to the COVID-19 virus, please let us pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Court, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are one. Conference Board Meeting, March 10th, 2021.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to approve the transcript. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
These are the transcripts from the March 10th?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Just a reminder to everyone, good evening, first of all. If you're not speaking, please mute your devices. So as we have to minimize any interruptions, thank you. This meeting of Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 breakout, please mute your devices. It may be a caller, can someone mute the callers, please? Thank you. This meeting of Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to being in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view the meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on a record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Secretary, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Hello? Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Hello?
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Absent.
Commissioner Mercado.
Absent.
Commissioner Sebel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all those affected and/or lost the COVID-19 virus, which in Essex County is 2,525 souls lost to the COVID-19 virus, please let us pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are one. Conference Board Meeting, March 10, 2021.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to approve the transcript. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
These are the transcripts from the March 10?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Absent. Commissioner Mercado. Absent. Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely and the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in, at this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for all of our callers. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded you will have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you'll have an opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for public comment sessions on non-agenda items. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer, will begin the public session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have two callers waiting to speak. The first caller is Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Sure. Hello, my name is Whitney Strube. I live in Newark, New Jersey, and I'm a member of North Jersey DSA, the Democratic Socialists of America. I'm commenting on the budget and I'm calling once again to object to your continued profiteering from ICE detention. It was immoral under Trump and it is immoral under Biden. And I'd like to comment on it with a question as well. I just got my last response from you, which says, you wrote, "There is no collaboration. We are performing the duties and responsibilities as outlined by law." But then in that very same statement, you go on to say, "Because of our contract with ICE, the agency has staff that closely monitors the facility and all those who are housed there." That does seem to me to be collaboration. It's because you are choosing to contract with ICE that there is ICE staff on site helping to pull people from the jail into ICE detention. And then you wrote that if ICE requests that an inmate be detained on a warrant, we are obligated to carry out that request. I'm not so sure about that. I'm a little confused because I'm looking at the Attorney General's Immigrant Trust Directive and it says, this is a verbatim quote, "Under federal and state law, local law enforcement agencies are not required to enforce civil administrative warrants or detainers issued by federal immigration officers." And so could you, I would like as a question, could you clarify that? You are stating, this is Joe D., the executive stating, again, "If ICE requests that an inmate be detained on a warrant, we are obligated to carry out that request." Is that true? I don't think that's true. And I'd like some explanation of, if it is true, what's the basis for that? And related to that, I have three follow-up questions. The categories that the Attorney General outlined you collaborating with ICE on are: One, provided access to ICE to a detained individual for an interview; Two, provided notice to ICE of a detained individual's upcoming release; And Three, continued detention for ICE of a detained individual past the time otherwise eligible for release. Are you obligated to do those three things or are those volitional things? So it says, "Essex County choosing to provide access to ICE to detained individuals, notice to ICE, and continued detention." Because my impression is you are not required to do any of that. And I believe that Essex County is choosing to do that. And I believe that that is what I meant by collaboration. And I believe you are collaborating with ICE.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Strube.
So, again, I very much would like a clear written response to those questions because these are important issues. You know, this is a question of, you know, to what extent are you choosing to collaborate with ICE versus obligation? So I do hope to get a detailed response, not the usual brush-off response. And, you know, with the seconds I have remaining, again, I do protest your continued taking of ICE blood money. Cory Booker is with me, Bob Menendez is with me, in fact, the overwhelming majority of Democrats are with me, and this is shameful. So please end the contract. Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. William Robinson. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Dr. William Brett Robertson. I am a resident of Essex County, New Jersey. I am on this call tonight to comment on and denounce the unconscionable ongoing collaboration between Essex County and the federal agency ICE or Immigration and Customs Enforcement. The Trump administration, which ended only a few short months ago, was marked by an ongoing shameless effort to scapegoat, dehumanize, and demonize immigrants. Millions of people across the United States and in New Jersey and Essex County were appropriately horrified by the efforts undertaken by his administration and by the Department of Homeland Security and ICE. I do not believe that residents of Essex County think that such hatred of immigrants is justified. I believe that the people of Essex County highly value the many contributions of immigrants. In fact, President Trump received less than 22% of the vote in Essex County in last year's election. That seems like pretty clear evidence that the people of Essex County soundly reject Trump's hateful approach to immigration. That is why it is so disappointing to see Essex County attempt to balance their budget by continued reliance on a contract with ICE, an agency that exists to demonize, harass, torture, and deport immigrants to this country, including individuals who arrived here as young children. And yet, Essex County has more ICE detainees than any other county in New Jersey. The Essex County Correctional Facility has a history of abuses. In 2018, a Department of Homeland Security inspection found bloody chicken, moldy bread, and atrocious living conditions. Farouk Karimou, a Bronx cab driver, claimed that he was beaten and raped by corrections officers but was deported to Ghana before an investigation could take place. Jose Hernandez Velasquez was beaten and assaulted by guards in his shower at the age of 20 in 2019. Corrections officers were charged in federal court with beating a man in federal detention in ECCF and filing false reports. The systemic violence of this facility is glaring and undeniable, yet the commissioners avoid serious accountability. I believe that if residents of Essex County were aware of the contract by which Essex County takes tens of millions of dollars from ICE, they would agree that it is grossly inappropriate. I call on the commissioners to immediately end their contract with ICE. Blood money from a deal with a rogue agency should not be used to meet the county's budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any more speakers for public comment.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have two public comments. One is from Adam Kramer of West Orange regarding the adoption of 2021 County of Essex budget and other agenda items. Commissioners, once again, the budget is big and the taxes are much higher than they should be. The budget is not good for our property owners in the county. Taxes range from 2% of property or about $20,000 on a million-dollar mansion in Short Hills of section of Milburn to about 5.5% of value in Irvington or about $8,250 on a modest $150,000 home in Irvington. By the way, if you are renting in Irvington, you are paying a stealth tax of about 30% on your rent, as your landlord is most likely devoting about 30% of rent roll to cover these high taxes and ups the rents accordingly. If I did not lose the District Four Commissioner's seat last November, 40 to 50% and fairly squarely to Commissioner Luciano, I would be voting the budget down and trim more from the government to help taxpayers who with COVID-19 are really hurting in an economic sense by holding the line or reducing taxation. There's election in 2023 for all the commissioners and the people of Essex County need to get at least one person of fiscal responsibility on the commission. The level of debt should concern the people of Essex County, even if the bond rating agency claim the county has great credit. The budgeting process relies excessively on bonding debt or one-party rule and Essex County does not help taxpayers. And the Republicans have been 100% shut out of county government for about a decade and a half. The county tax bill and the other part of the local property tax bill has grown a lot in that period of time, one-party rule. Citizens should remember this when they pay high tax rent, included in high tax bills when they vote. Commissioners, I do think that all nine of you are good, honorable people, but you can do a lot better for the taxpayer and this big budget and big tax levy shows that. The next item is, and that, the remainder of this document will be read into record at a later time. And I'm just checking, I believe, I believe that that is it for agenda items. Mr. President, that includes our written comments for agenda items for public comment session.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Please ensure that this information is relayed to the administration for an appropriate response. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances, resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Mr. President, we have two. Resolution number R-2021-00159 and resolution number R-2021-00160.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will now move to public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00159. Please read it into record at a later time. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00159 open. If there are any members of the public who email comments for or against this ordinance, we'll read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing if there are any. Are there any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. President. Right now, we do not have any callers for public comment on this ordinance.
Madam Clerk, are there any written correspondence on this?
Mr. President, there are none.
Let the record reflect, there are no comments received and no callers waiting. Mr. McInerney.
Yes, Mr. President, we have before, these are two resolutions. One is to allow the county to exceed the county tax levy in terms of the cap bank. This allows us to use authorized funds that we did not authorize amounts, not necessarily funds, authorized amounts to not use to the full extent of the law in prior years, in the two prior years. We haven't really utilized any of this because we've had very, very nominal tax increases. In the 2021 budget, it was a half a percent. So this is just really an opportunity to make sure, kind of an insurance policy, to make sure that if we do need to raise taxes above the cap, that we do have this authorization in back. And again, I make the point, these are not dollars. These are authorizations of dollars and not actual funds. The second one is the adoption of the Essex County budget. I spoke to Mr. Paravekio, and I think at this point, I'd like him to address this, you know, resolution.
I don't think we're on that one yet. Just doing 159 at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Paravekio.
I don't have any other questions on Resolution 2021.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pumarres and a second from Commissioner Sebel to close the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00159. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve the resolution?
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado, absent. Commissioner Luciano. Absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will now move to resolutions R-2021-00160.
Would you like me to read this into the record at a later time?
Read it into the record at a later date.
And, Mr. President, I believe our council has a comment or statement regarding this resolution.
Mr. Paravekio.
Yes, Mr. President, it's my understanding that it's appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn this resolution to the meeting of May 12. It was placed on the record at the last meeting that the state was reviewing the budget that was submitted. There are certain amendments that will come up later in the meeting and that the public hearing, second reading and public hearing on this. Because of that, the second hearing, second reading and public hearing on the budget should be adjourned. So it would be appropriate to take a motion to adjourn it to that meeting of May 12.
Thank you, Mr. Paravekio. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Sebel to adjourn this until May 12. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we will now move to resolutions R-2021-00160.
Would you like me to read this into the record at a later time?
Read it into the record at a later date.
And, Mr. President, I believe our council has a comment or statement regarding this resolution.
Mr. Paravekio.
Yes, Mr. President, it's my understanding that it's appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn this resolution to the meeting of May 12. It was placed on the record at the last meeting that the state was reviewing the budget that was submitted. There are certain amendments that will come up later in the meeting and that the public hearing, second reading and public hearing on this. Because of that, the second hearing, second reading and public hearing on the budget should be adjourned. So it would be appropriate to take a motion to adjourn it to that meeting of May 12.
Thank you, Mr. Paravekio. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Sebel to adjourn this until May 12. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado, absent. Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution. Luke, excuse me.
We just want to advise that Commissioner Mercado has just joined us.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number one, amending the 2021 budget. Mr. Jackson, please explain.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members. Our CFO, Hassan Mohammed, and Annette de Blasio, a budget analyst, are going to address this item. Hassan, we can't hear you if you're talking. Hassan?
Yeah. They're both on, yeah.
Together?
Well, yeah, called in separately, but both on, yeah.
They were both supposedly on, Mr. President, I don't know where they are.
Talking, can't hear, are you, did they mute everybody on their end?
You have them muted on your end, perhaps? He's talking, am I correct? He's talking, but we can't hear. Is he muted on your, on?
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, all the calls are unmuted now. Thank you.
Hassan?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Hassan Mohammed. I'm the CFO. Resolution number one, amending the 2021 budget. This resolution is amending the introduced budget based on the state review work common. And there is no any changes in the tax levy. I'm here for any questions.
Mr. President?
Yeah, I'm muted. Mr. Paravekio.
I'll defer to Mr. McInerney. Wait, no, I said.
Thank you. amended resolution is pretty much based on the various comments, excuse me, comments that were made by the state when they reviewed the county's introduced budget. Again, none of these amendments have anything to do with the tax levy. They were, I'm dealing with really a number of, you know, various line items and revenue. But again, the tax levy stays the same as it was when we introduced the budget. So I have, I have no problems with these amendments and I, I think we should move forward on them.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pumarres and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Absent. Commissioner Mercado. Absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolutions number two through six and 43, which are from the Office of Management and Budget. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm gonna refer this to Mr. Mohammed.
Good afternoon, Hassan Mohammed. Resolution two through six and 43 are standard resolutions required by the state of New Jersey to authorize the county to exceed the cap for the offices of prosecutor, sheriff, surrogate, clerk, commissioner of registration, and Board of Elections.
Mr. Paravekio.
Yes, Mr. President, for these particular offices, these county entities, which are really statutory offices rather than departments, the local budget law requires this resolution to exceed the budget request cap. So that's what these...
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Number Two through Six and Forty-three, which are from the Office of Management and Budget. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm gonna refer this to Mr. Mohammed.
Good afternoon, Hassan Mohammed. Resolution Two through Six and Forty-three are standard resolutions required by the State of New Jersey to authorize the county to exceed the cap for the offices of prosecutor, sheriff, surrogate, clerk, commissioner of registration, and Board of Elections.
Mr. Paravekio?
Yes, Mr. President, for these particular offices, these county entities, which are really statutory offices rather than departments, the local budget law requires this resolution to exceed the budget request cap. So that's what these five, five resolutions are seeking to do.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. McInerney, did I skip you?
That's okay, Mr. Paravekio.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo, and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Excuse me, Mr. President, is that for Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Forty-three?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Cooper?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
And, Mr. President, that was a yes from Commissioner Gill.
Correct.
Commissioner, Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Seven and Eight, which are from the Commissioner of Registration and Superintendent of Elections. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Ms. Fango and Ms. Williams are going to address these two items.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patty Spango, Acting Commissioner of Registration and Superintendent of Elections for Essex County. Contract award to Inclusion Solutions to provide privacy voting booths, 12-month contract, amount not to exceed $1,234,450. And the vendors are on another line if there are any questions that I cannot answer.
This is Hollister Bundy, I'm the President of Inclusion Solutions. Did you, if anyone has any questions, that's great, or if folks would like a quick introduction of the company, I can do that as well.
Yes, have the introduction to the company, tell us a little bit about the company.
Yes, Commissioners, absolutely. So my name's Hollister Bundy, our company is called Inclusion Solutions. We are located in Evanston, Illinois, just on the outskirts of Chicago. We have been working in the field of elections, pretty much providing everything but the voting machine since the year 2000. We are a small business, we have nine employees, we have some women ownership as well. We have been working with election officials around the country for years. These voting booths have been extraordinarily popular. We've done about 35,000 or 40,000 of them around the United States. New Jersey, as you know, has just opened up early voting, and has made some exciting new changes to the voting system. And as a result, the need for these voting booths has finally come time in New Jersey. We are thrilled to be working with the Commissioner of Registration and Superintendent of Elections. We have worked with Essex County on various projects since the year 2007, and it's a pleasure to be working with everyone again.
Thank you. Mr. Paravekio?
Yes, I do have a question. How many of these privacy voting booths will the county be buying? And will they be stored similar to the way the voting machines are stored, and then transported out to the various voting locations on Election Day?
See, well, I think Patty can probably answer that better than me.
Okay, I'm here. I believe, to answer you, the voting privacy booths are stored at our warehouse in Belleville. They are transported by our truckers when they deliver our machines. And based on the polling location, sometimes we do combine districts, as we did in yesterday's election. Based on the number of districts will dictate how many, they make a quad, which is a four-person voting privacy booth, and they make a single. And they are placed strategically by the size of the polling location, and by the number of voters that are expected to turn out at that location.
Okay, so it's a minimum of one per polling location?
Yes, at minimum one.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just to explain a little bit...
Estimated quantity that we're looking to buy is a thousand, and that would be a combination, like I said, of the quad, which is a four-person voting screen, or a single.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
What's the disposition of the old machines? What happens to them?
The old machines were bought back from Dominion. We got a credit on them, removed from our warehouse. They are gone. That was part of our contract.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Sebo?
I have a question. What is the durability of the privacy voting machines? Will they all last? What happens if something happens to one of them during an election? How durable are they?
Well, do you want me to answer it on the booth, Patty, and you could answer it on the machines?
I, Patty, I...
Through you, Mr. President. Each time someone speaks, they should state their name and position for the record.
I apologize. Well, this is Hollister Bundy from Inclusion Solutions, and I will speak to the durability of the voting booths. These are extraordinarily durable booths, the best on the market by far, and I know Essex County did their due diligence on that. They're made with a combination of aircraft-grade and automated aluminum, and the same type of plastic that makes motorcycle helmets. They're one-piece construction, they don't fall apart, there are no pieces to lose, and they will take several hundred pounds of weight. And as part of the contract, there is a warranty on them as well, although, again, with 35,000 in service, we've seen next-to-no in-service failures.
So we don't have to worry about anything happening to any of them? They should be durable and be able to be in good use during the election?
Absolutely. They will, they will last a long time. I don't think any of us will be doing this anymore by the time they run their useful course.
Commissioner Sebo, in answer, if I can just add to your question, we researched this intensely, and every privacy voting booth that we found, that we had samples, were very, very thin, very flimsy, could be broken, could even be broken during transport. These voting booths that we did find, the privacy voting booths, are the most durable, to our knowledge, that are on the market, which is why we chose them.
So we should feel comfortable with this choice, then?
Patty Spango, yes, Commissioner, I do believe you can be comfortable.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your answer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Absolutely. This is Hollister Bundy, Inclusion Solutions, and yes, these are a proven commodity around the country, and Essex County Elections Department did their due diligence on it, and it's a privilege to be working with them. We are certain that your poll workers, voters, staff, and indeed the Commissioners will all be extremely happy with these privacy booths.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Commissioner, Commissioner Mercado, and then Commissioner Cooper.
Yes, NORC had the benefit of having an election yesterday, and actually got to see these booths. They were easy to install, they were, it's very durable, I think it's a good product. The only thing at the election is that the workers didn't know that they had it, they were in a box, and some of them didn't know. So I know I went to two polling booths and put them together, and got them up and running. So they are a good quality, I think they were four people distance, and it's nice, and it's durable. So the product itself, I think, is a good product. A comment on the scanner machines, we had various problems with machines. I can tell you personally, on the district that I was at, the machine wouldn't turn on, they sent a tech after 30 minutes, they had to take it apart, put it back together. We lost an hour of voting, and several voters left that were lost. Later, after it was running, the scanner wouldn't scan, they had to come back, and then actually replaced it with another scanner, so they had some issues with the actual machine. Once the scanners were running good, voting was seamless, it was a nice process, voters were in and out with no problem, so long as the machine was functional. And there were some functionality issues, which I think we could talk maybe at a later time.
Thank you, Commissioner Mercado. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions about the, are these freestanding partitions or tabletop partitions? And then, I think in the presentation, you said that we have an option of picking single partition or quad partitions. If we go with quad petitions, what's the distance between them? What's the height and overall dimensions of the partitions?
This is Hollister Bundy from Inclusion... Patty, do you want me to answer this, or would you like to answer it?
Go first, Hollister.
Okay, absolutely. So this is Hollister Bundy, President of Inclusion Solutions. The single booths obviously are standalone, and can be placed wherever you want. All of the booths are freestanding, they are freestanding, as Patty had mentioned, both as a single and as a four station. With respect to the four-station booths, the height of them is about six and a half feet in the air with privacy banners, I'm sorry, with a privacy wing. It is designed to create a natural barrier between voters, so that they are separated for both safety and for complete privacy of voters. And the other factor is obviously where they're placed, and that's something that Patty can speak to, but there are regulations, both in terms of ADA compliance and other election administration, as to where the booths are placed within a particular polling location.
Patty Spango, Commissioner, as far as you questioned, you know, using quads or using single privacy booths, that is usually determined by Linda Von Essie in the Board of Elections, because a lot of it has to do with the size of the polling location, and what we can put there, and also by the voter turnout. So that is, like this past election yesterday, for the NORC School Board, Irvington and Fairfield, for every dis, for every machine that went out, every district received one quad and one single. And we were able to accommodate that in the voting, the polling locations that were used yesterday.
Another question, Ms. Spango, are there, what are the protocols for, you know, I've gotten concerns back from voters about going out to vote, about, you know, sanitizing with COVID?
Well, that comes from the Board of Elections with the poll workers. They were given a very large bag, which was, came from this, of all PPE, and there were instructions from Linda Von Essie, the clerk of the board, with what the protocol was for sanitizing, and that was put into place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham, and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions Seven and Eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Nine and Ten, which are from the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Make ballotball part of the solution. Place your order when we return to your important call.
Okay, what is that?
Somebody mute. Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Director Green will answer, will address the items Nine and Ten.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioner Board. The Department of Citizen Services, Division of Family Assistance and Benefits, Valentina Richardson-Green, Deputy Director, requests approval of emergency declaration payment to Garden Hill Funeral Director Services Incorporated and Chapels of Eden for indigent burial services in the amount of $31,863. That's for direct and indigent and unclaimed burial services.
Thank you. Mr. Paravekio, any questions?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Any questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado, and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pumarres to take Resolutions Nine and Ten as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number Eleven, which is from the Office of Board of Taxation. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, as you said, this is from the Board of Taxation to provide for auditing accounting services from Samuel Klein and Company, April 12, 2021, to April 11, 2022, in an amount not to exceed $23,850. It was a publicly advertised fair and open RFP. This was the sole respondent, and this is the same vendor as last time, and will be paid for through operating funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paravekio?
No questions on that one.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? I have one. Samuel Klein, I know he's been with the county for a long time, does a great job, but it seems like it's the same amount every year, does it ever go up?
I can, I guess, probably don't ask, Mr. President. I think, I think what happens is, is that as they go through it, Frank can speak this better than I, but as they've done through a number of years, their ability to go through it, since they've been so experienced with the account, probably easier, they can get it done quicker, quicker, and easier, having such experience. But that's just my, yes, Frank could probably explain better than I.
No, I think the level of institutional knowledge adds a great deal of value, and obviously cuts to time, although there's additional audit procedures that have been required by, by the American Institute of CPAs, that they've had to, you know, comply with. Sometimes that increases the time, but I think, you know, even the audit, I think is somewhere around $350,000, $348,500. It's, it's at least the last 15 or 20 years, so they've been able to maintain that, you know, very well, and have done a very good job.
Mr. President, Julius Cultry, Purchasing Agent, this is just for the Office of Taxation, no other department. This is just Samuel Klein doing the Office of Taxation. We also have other audits that are done by Samuel Klein for the entire county budget, et cetera. That's what Mr. McInerney was just speaking on, but this is strictly for the Office of Taxation.
No, true, I just thought it was a general question with regards to the overall bills that we're getting from Samuel Klein, which has been pretty stagnant in terms of increases.
Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
If I could just add that they do excellent work. Thank you. If I could just add, they do excellent work for the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo, and a second from Commissioner Cooper. And I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Cooper. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions number 12 through 18, which are from the Department of Public Works. You can read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Antonio and Mr. Dericati are here to address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 12 is a shared services agreement between the County of Essex and the Township of Irvington for the resurfacing of Clinton Avenue. The Township of Irvington is in need of resurfacing the portion of Clinton Avenue between Springfield and the Newark City Line, which is under municipal jurisdiction, while the County of Essex desires a portion of Clinton Avenue between Springfield and the Maplewood Town Line, which is on the county's jurisdiction, to be plowed and silted during winter, snow or ice events. It is anticipated that the cost to resurface Clinton Avenue between Springfield and the City of Newark line will be about $400,000. These funds will be available from the State of New Jersey grant through the 2021 Annual Transportation Program. So there are no direct financial impacts to the county. It is anticipated that construction will take place either in July or August of this year. Item number 13 is the contract award to Hanen Floor Covering Corporation to provide for the replacement of rubber flooring at the Cody Arena, Rank Number Two. This is a contract that shall not exceed $248,800. The duration shall be 180 days. The funding for this project will come from the Parks Department. Some of the tasks are the removal of existing rubber floor, installation of a new rubber floor at Rank Number Two, the outer perimeter, that is, installation of a new rubber floor at Rank Number Two, the bathrooms and the locker rooms, plus moisture mitigation system installation. Tonight with us, we have Mr. Don Hanen on the phone from Hanen Floor Covering Corporation to introduce himself. Mr. Hanen.
Hello, everyone. My name is Don Hanen. I work for Hanen Floors, we're out of Union, New Jersey. Our company was founded in 1928 in Newark and has been family owned and operated for 93 years. We're a small business enterprise. We specialize mostly in commercial flooring, specifically government work. In our office, we have 15 employees and our installers range from 15 to 40 employees, depending on the season. We are a union company with installers from Local 251. Our company has done work for the county, including work at Hall of Records, the Police Academy and a bunch of projects for the Parks Department. And we've done government work throughout the state. And this current project is for replacing the rubber floor at Ace Rank Number Two at the Cody Arena for the outer rink area and the bathrooms and locker rooms. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
You do number 14.
Item number 14. Willie Dericat, Public Works, Department of Public Works. Item number 14, contract award to American Athletic Courts Incorporated to replace the top layer surface of the existing track at Watsessing Park. I have Al Bucarelli on the phone if you have any questions.
Let's get Al.
Good evening, Al Bucarelli, Treasurer, American Athletic.
Yeah, I'll tell you a little bit about the contract and your company and what you're going to be doing.
Sure. Yes, company is American Athletic. Incorporated since 1983, the state of New Jersey. We're a family owned and operated company. We're a small business enterprise. The details on this project are to remove the existing track surface, inspect the sub base and install a new track surface for the community and striping.
Willie Dericat.
Hold on one second, hold on one second. Mr. Paula Vecchio, did you have a question?
No, I don't.
Please continue.
Willie Dericat, Department of Public Works. Item number 15, contract award to Athletic Fields of America to replace the football soccer field synthetic turf at Branch Brook Park. I have Phil Perrow on the phone if you have any questions or comments. Phil?
Phil? Good evening, everyone. This is Christian Tedford, Athletic Fields of America. I'm stepping in for Phil tonight. I'm a project manager here. We're a non-union prevailing wage women business enterprise operating out of Montville, New Jersey. We're a general contractor that specializes in constructing synthetic turf fields. We self-perform the majority of our work, everything down from the storm drainage system all the way up to the turf and other site amenities. We have plenty of experience working with Essex County in the past. The most recent projects that we've done with you guys are Wequake Park Baseball Field as well as Watsessing Park Soccer Lacrosse Field as well as the Lawn Bowling Court. The work being done at Branch Brook Park is basically removing the existing turf, touching up the stone base and then installing new carpet on top of that stone base. We're also going to be installing some new amenities such as soccer and lacrosse goals, trash receptacles and player benches. And we're looking forward to get started on this. We have a lot of good, good experiences working with the county in the past and it's always good to get back to the community.
Do you employ any Essex County residents?
I'm not aware of any at this time.
Next.
Willie Dericat, Department of Public Works. Item number 16, contract award to American Athletic, American Fields, Athletic Fields of America for the replacement of the synthetic turf at Riverfront Park. I have Chris on the line again, Chris.
Christian, Athletic Fields of America. The scope of work here is more or less the same as at Branch Brook Park. We're going to be taking out the existing turf, touching up the stone base, replacing it with new carpet. And then we're also going to be adding similar site amenities, soccer goals, trash receptacles, player benches, things of that nature.
Again, no Essex County residents employed, right?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, next.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 17, contract award to Aspen Refrigerants. The single bidder per item on a unit cost basis to furnish and deliver preon and refrigerant products. This is a one-year contract not to exceed $60,000. These are the refrigerants used by our stationary engineers during HVAC maintenance allocations like the Hall of Records, the Correctional Facility and the Juvenile Detention Center. Item number 18, it's a contract award to the two lowest responsive bidders per item, per region to provide vehicle wash and detail services for north and east and south and west regions of Essex County. This is a two-year agreement not to exceed $200,000.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. McInerney.
Mr. President, number 12, Resolution 12 is a shared services agreement. But all the other ones, 13 through 18, are all either lowest responsive bidder or sole responsive, responsible bidder. So all these have gone through the bidding, you know, process and it doesn't get any better than that. So I have no problem with these.
Mr. Paula Vecchio.
I'll come to answer that.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Siebel.
Mute myself. I have trouble muting myself, I'm sorry. On number 12. Am I correct in saying that the Township of Irvington has already passed a resolution in support of this?
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Graham to take Resolutions 12 through 18 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 19 through 23, which are from the Departments of Parks and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zaitz, we'll handle these items.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Number 19 is a contract award for graphic arts and design services to Iris Communications in an amount not to exceed $122,600. This is for all the graphics, design work for the various events we do as well as anything over at the zoo. It would cover summer, our fall activities and also some brochures that we would send out throughout the year. Number 19 is a contract award to the two lowest bidders, Shoger Group and Denoprio Sons to provide landscape meeting services for various parks. Specifically, we broke down what is 13 parks into two sections, two groups. The first group is the Brass Brook Park Extension, Bellville Park, Eagle Rock Reservation, Verona Park, Grover Cleveland Park and Riker Hill are all part of group number one, which Shoger was the lowest responsive bidder. And group number two is Irvington, West Side, Ivy Hill, Valesburg, Riverbank, Independence and Riverfront, for which Denoprio was the lowest bidder. And I do believe we have representatives from each company on the line. Maybe we'll, let's hear from Shoger first to explain more.
Good evening. This is Clarence Nathaniel Skyers III, project manager for the Shoger Group, Shoger Property Services. We're located out of East Orange, New Jersey. We are a WBE company facilitating work for the county for several decades now. We've had the luxury of performing the landscaping under this contract since about 2015 and we look forward to continuing work with you.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. We also, I believe, have Denoprio on the line to tell us a little about their company.
Oh. Hello? Yes, this is Diane Denoprio. I am the owner of Denoprio and Sun Landscaping. We also have been cutting and maintaining the parks for quite some time, probably from at least 2015. We will be continuing to maintain them in the, according to the bid specs going forward.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Moving along to number 21 is a contract award to Britton Electric Hall to provide outdoor electric power. It's a 24-month contract extension to exceed $241,602,000. And specifically, this is for all the field lighting we have in the various fields throughout the park system. If anything goes wrong, Britton would come out and repair it. Number 22 is a contract award to Hodges Party Rental to provide rental party-related items at events and concerts, not to exceed $200,000. This is for the various tables, tents, chairs and other such things that we would use for different events, including some concerts, fireworks, some of our fall events. And number 23 is a contract award to Sunbelt Rentals to furnish and deliver portable diesel-powered generators, not to exceed $372,920. We had a contract like this previously. This time we did it a little differently in that there's a whole plethora of generators, different sizes, essentially small, medium and large. The previous contract was only one type of generator. So if we needed a smaller wattage or voltage, I should say, we were still forced to pay the higher price for the higher voltage. So this, this contract should actually save us some money in the long run. And I do believe we have a representative from Sunbelt on the line.
Yes, good evening. My name is Shane Cunningham. I'm the branch manager for Sunbelt Rentals Power and HVAC Services. We are located in Totoa, New Jersey. Sunbelt Rentals as a whole employs about 15,000 people across 48 states. We have 15 full-time employees out of our total location. We have anywhere between $8 to $10 million a fleet in our yard at any given time and is strictly made up of diesel power generators. Our employees are all union employees. They are part of the local 825 operating engineers. And we took over this contract previously from a company called Wish Star Equipment that we acquired back in 2019. And we look forward to continue the relationship with Essex County to provide, as Josh said, anywhere from a small 20 kW up to 150 kW diesel generator. Thank you.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. That is all the parks items. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Paula Vecchio.
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
McInerney.
I don't have any questions either.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you. Question in reference to Orange Park. Do you know what is the timeline for doing the tree survey and pruning and trimming? I've been asked that question by residents in recent weeks.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. I know our maintenance department is hard at work surveying the various parks to see what tree issues we can address. I do not currently have a timeframe for the various parks. We can certainly get back to you with the estimate of that timeframe.
That would be great, I appreciate it. The next question is also in reference to Orange Park. I'm thinking about Resolution number 21. I've also gotten complaints about Orange Park in reference to the timing of the lights on the soccer field. You know, the residents are complaining, you know, that it's too bright at nighttime. Do you know the hours that the lights are supposed to come on and go off?
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. It really varies for the different seasons and obviously, you know, spring versus summer. Times may, but often I'm not sure when the timer is, but we can certainly check. And if it needs adjusting, we can certainly take care of that.
Yeah, can you please get back to me so I can communicate that to the residents?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Siebel and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions 19 through 23 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Graham.
Yes. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 24 and 25, which are from the Division of Housing and Community Development. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Lombardi will handle.
Mr. President, Mr. Lombardi will handle these two items.
Uh, good evening. Craig Lombardi, a program coordinator for the Division of Housing and Community Development. Item 24, we are requesting an extension of the sub-recipient agreement with the Township of Livingston for a CDVG grant award. And then for number 25, I'm sorry, um, for number 25, we are requesting an extension of a sub-recipient agreement with Family Promise Incorporated, uh, and that was an ESG grant and Mercury Solutions grant. In, in both, in both cases, we, uh, the funding was previously okay for both these projects with we-program funds, and in both cases, the activity was completed in a timely manner. However, there was, there were some administrative issues when setting up and processing the vouchers from each of these activities. Uh, by getting this contract extension, uh, we, we have, I should note that we have resolved those issues, and by getting these contract extensions, we would then be able to reimburse, uh, both parties for the work that they did do. And, uh, as I indicated earlier, in both cases, these grants had been approved, uh, earlier, and both activities were, uh, completed in a timely manner.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions for me.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take resolutions 24 and 25 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session with the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Clerk, can you give them the call-in information?
Yes, Mr. President. If you are calling in, the number is 855-756-7520. That's 855-756-7520. And use the password 72845Pound. That's 7284, I'm sorry, 72846, 72846Pound. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero placed in the queue to speak during the meeting. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order, uh, that the call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. So at this time, our public information officer will announce callers so they can state their comment or question. Be reminded, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. And, and, and at this time, we're accepting calls pertaining, at, at that time, we'll be accepting calls to non-agenda items later on when we get to public comment session in the program.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution 26, which is from the Department of Corrections, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Directors Ortiz and Perillo are here to address this item.
Good evening. Anthony Perillo, Director Essex County Police Academy. Good evening, Commissioners, President, Vice President. I'm here to speak on the building maintenance service contract at the Essex County Police Academy, which is provided by DCO Energy LLC. And we're requesting to exercise the 24-month contract extension option amount not to, not to exceed $614,158.09. Um, to speak on the contract, I have Dave Delvecchio from DCO Energy.
Thank you, Director, and Mr. President, through you, um, thank you for this opportunity. And I believe also with me tonight, um, Fred Eckert, the Executive Vice President at DCO, uh, Ron Alley, Barry McThicker, and John Wall. And, uh, Mr. President, uh, I wanted you to know, and, and the rest of the boards, that we are a, uh, a union company, and we employ, uh, we employ, uh, local 68 members as part of our, uh, effort in the, uh, to provide this service to the county.
Thank you for that information.
And in terms of the, uh, in terms of the police academy, we, uh, essentially are at the direction of the director, and essentially whatever he needs us to do, we do.
Okay, thank you.
If you'd like me to speak on that, I can.
Feel free.
Um, we have a large facility, um, that has a huge boiler system, same thing with our firearms training facility.
Who, who's speaking?
Anthony Perillo, Director Essex County Police Academy.
Thank you.
So we have, we have a huge boiler system, a huge chiller system. So, you know, we, we put four, 500 recruits in our academy a year, and we, we run continually. So, uh, we need to have, have a service available just in case, uh, any of our boilers, any of our, um, chiller systems, HVAC systems go down, and any, any other issues in regard to, uh, maintaining the running of the facility, and DCO Energy handles that for us.
Thank you, Director.
Welcome.
Mr. Polavecchio.
No comments on that.
Mr. McInerney.
No comments.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Sebel.
Mr. President, um, DCO has been working for us, DCO Energy has been working for Essex County for a number of years, and they've been doing an excellent job. So I'm happy to see that they are on the agenda.
Uh, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pamares and a second from Commissioner Sebel. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution 27, which is from the Office of the Sheriff, and we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract award to Communication Specialists Incorporated of the lowest responsive responsible bidder to repair and install services for vehicles for emergency lighting and sirens. It's a 24-month agreement in an amount not to exceed, uh, $100,000. Uh, the rate is $24 per hour for repair and installation. There's an allowance in the contract for unforeseen parts and labor. Um, this is the same vendor that we had, uh, before, and the Sheriff's Department is, um, pleased with their, uh, service. And again, this is a contracted amount not to exceed, uh, $100,000.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio.
No comments, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
Uh, Mr. President, this is a not-to-exceed contract, so obviously if it comes in less, uh, we will not spend the full $100,000. Uh, just a quick question. Is the parts, um, based on catalog, or, um, how, how would they, uh, fix the price on the parts within the contract?
I will, uh, defer to Mr. Coltrane on that, um, item. Mr. Coltrane? He's still waiting for us. Well, we'll get back to you, Franco, on that one.
Okay, that's not a problem.
I did not leave you yet. I am here. Um, basically, last time we had this contract, we spent $66,000, and I asked the same question. Basically, it's re, uh, repair and installation, and the parts will come out of their operating budget.
Um.
Sheriff will have to pay for it out of his operating budget, because this is strictly labor and, and installation.
All right, so that would be.
They will have to buy it off of another vendor, give it to this particular company, and then, uh, install into their vehicles.
Okay, so that's probably, that's either under a state contract or another bid contract or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number 28, which is from the Office of the Prosecutor, and we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution, this is a bit of housekeeping from a resolution that was approved back in, uh, May of 2020. Uh, it regards a juvenile prosecutor's grant program, and the state has asked us to, uh, update the resolution. Um, I should say this program covers travel to and from, uh, various conferences for these, the juvenile prosecutor's office. Um, the state wants us to update the resolution for three reasons. One, the, uh, grant time, uh, has been expended for, extended for two months. Um, and now that they have, there's a, a grant reference number that they want to be included. And finally, because of the, the name of the, uh, name change for the board, from the Board of Free Elders to the Board of County Commissioners, they want the resolution to reflect that as well. So that's what this, uh, resolution is doing.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio.
No comments, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney.
No, no questions.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano absent, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
You got the camera?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number 29, which is from the Office of the County Administrator, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract with Associated Humane Services to perform trap-neuter, um, vaccine and release services for the County of Essex for, uh, the period of January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $25,000. This is a contract renewal. They performed this work, uh, in 2020. However, it was, uh, quite impacted by COVID-19, and they weren't able to get out and have people bring, um, cats or go out and to get cats. So, um, uh, we spent $70,000 last year. We're, we've already seen this year a tremendous uptick in, in the amount of, uh, services that they have provided. Uh, so that's going well. And this is, um, if you know, it's extent to control, uh, the, the number of feral cats that we have throughout the county. Uh, AHS are experts in that field, and the, the cost is $50 for per service, and which goes to supplement the cost of them providing it. Uh, on the phone, we have, um, Pam Paricio with, um, Associated Humane to, uh, address this item further. Uh, Ms. Paricio?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I, my name is Pam Paricio. I am the Mobile Unit Coordinator, and this program is going extremely well. Um, we do TNR on Mondays. Um, we usually do 10, sometimes more. Um, and if they're able to trap, we'll do a few on Thursdays as well. Um, hopefully, it will reduce the colonies. Uh, it's an awesome, awesome program.
Quick, quick question. Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. Polavecchio, you got a question?
I can wait for you, Mr. President.
So my question is, uh, approximately how many, um, is there an average of how many you TNR, like on Mondays and on the days that you do catch them?
We do 10 or, 10 or more on Monday. It's depending, um, how many they can trap. Um, they start trapping, I believe, on Sundays. Uh, there, we have groups, uh, Seapaw of New Jersey, Miss Pat's Cats, R and M Rock and Rescue, and there is a few other, um, groups. Anyone that's interested in learning how to trap, I refer them to R and M Rock and Rescue. Danielle Vitale, she's been doing it for over seven years. So it depends upon how many they can trap. Um, and if they can trap a few more, we'll take them on Thursday.
Thank you.
And we do male and female, and they're ear tipped as well, so we know what ones are done.
Got it. Mr. Polavecchio.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question was, uh, I think partially answered there, but do you coordinate with, uh, the various municipalities, with their health departments, or with these groups, and is it limited to, uh, any particular towns, or does it cover all the different towns?
It's, it's any, any, um, colonies in Essex County, obviously. Um, Seapaw, um, they do a lot in Nutley, Belleville, R and M Rock, Rock, Rock and Rescue does a lot in, um, Belleville as well. And Miss Pat, uh, does a lot in Newark. Anyone that is willing to learn how to trap in Essex County anywhere, we will, um, you know, refer them, and we will take the cats. If they can trap them, we will TNR them.
Thank you.
But they have to know how to trap them, for, you know, they have to trap them in a trap. The trap has to be numbered. Um, the traps need to be covered, and they have to have knowledge of aftercare as well. Because it is, you know, a surgery. And they must be ear tipped. Any other questions?
Mr. President, if I may?
Oh, yes, Vice President Pamares.
First, I wa, I want to commend my colleague, uh, Commissioner Cooper, because she's moved this committee very quickly and effectively, and this got into place very quickly last year, and had it not been for COVID, obviously, we, uh, would have gone through this faster. I'd like to know, if you can, for, uh, our caller, if you can give us a, a sense of, um, how, how many, uh, at the rate of 10 per day, if you do, uh, 10 a, a week perhaps on Monday, what's the rate of impact? How many less cats will there be in the course of this program because of this? It, it's, I, I may be hard, but like, what's a litter, what's the average litter, and can you give us a sense of what, how many hundreds of cats will not be on the streets as a result of this?
Well, a, a female cat could probably have four to six kittens. So for every female that is spayed, that's, see, what it does is it reduces the population. Because if they're not breeding, eventually, and I, I hate to say it in this way, but eventually, the colony dies off because they cannot produce more kittens. So it's very important to trap as many as we can and get them taken care of. Because the less that are mating, the less kittens are born. And unfortunately, And unfortunately, you know, when the kittens are born, a lot of them don't make it. And if they do, they just continue to breed.
So what's, what's the, roughly your percentage of spay or neuter, the male, female cats? Are you, it's about fifty-fifty, or do you see an uptick in one gender?
Um, some, sometimes we'll have, like, eight males and three females. And other days, we'll have more females than males. It just depends what cat goes into the trap. That, that's the key. It's where they place the trap, and what cat goes in it. If the cat goes in, it's, it's getting done. So far, now, I, I only came on board in January, but so far, we have never had a, a cat that was trapped that was already done. So that's a good thing.
The ones that are already done seem to know how to avoid the trap, huh?
Yeah, I, I think they see that trap and say, no, I'm not going in that trap again. But it is, it is working well, and it, it really will cut down on the feral cats. It really will. And if they, if they can produce, like I said, you know, it takes a while, but eventually, they'll, they'll just die off because they won't be able to keep producing, you know, kittens. And they have a horrible life. You know, it's cold, it's wet, it's hot, and it's, it's, it's terrible for them. So this helps a lot. And if there is kittens, we do take them. And if we can get kittens, you know, like, seven, eight weeks old, they're very adoptable. Like, a person would adopt a kitten faster than a, an older cat. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, no worries. So a normal household cat, house cat, could last like, live maybe twenty years or so, right?
Yes.
What's the life expectancy of these feral cats?
Uh, I wouldn't even know. Not twenty, that's for sure. Maybe ten if they're lucky. If they don't get, you know, I mean, people poison them. You know, like, they, they do. They get run over by cars. They get frost bites. You know, they, they have a mis, if, if someone's not feeding them, you know, they'll starve. Or they'll get ill. I mean, cats have a lot of illnesses. It, it's, it's sad. It's a sad situation. They don't have a long life expectancy, not like, not like a house cat. A, a house cat could live twenty, twenty-one years with proper care. And that's why we vaccinate them as well. Because if they're in fights, you know, like a raccoon will beat up a cat. You know, so if they're vaccinated, at least it protects them from, you know, rabies and things like that.
Got it, thank you.
We try to take care, we try to take care of them.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes, as a mobile unit, do you have a schedule when you go to the various municipalities?
We did, right now, because of the COVID situation. The mobile unit is parked right in front of the shelter. So we're doing right, everything right out of, right on Evergreen. We're just, you know, we're providing services through the mobile, but we're scheduling like fifteen minutes apart because of social distancing, and we, we're not out in the town yet. We'd like to get out in the town, but we're not there yet.
Right. I represent Newark. I live in the North Water and Forests, Forests Hills section. And we have an organization and members that have been volunteering their efforts to, you know, to try to help these cats in, in the community. So if, if they can coordinate with your office on, you know, some, some may be experienced in doing the, the traps, and I, I can't speak to that, I'll find out. And if so, I would like to at least have them connect with your office or your, your mobile unit so that they can, you know, coordinate some service delivery with them.
Absolutely. Just tell them to call the Newark branch. My extension is one-one-eight. And I, I, I'll be happy to work with them.
Thank you very much, Pam.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President?
Commissioner Cooper?
Uh, thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the administration and the board for supporting this pilot initiative that we rolled out in partnership with the Associated Humane Societies. And I want to thank them for stepping up and especially continuing to do the work that they did during COVID. They still service a good number of cats, given the constraints that we're in. We have a TNR meeting scheduled for May fifth. So I want to thank everyone for keeping up the efforts and the interest with, with addressing this issue that's so important and dear to our community. Freeholder Vice President, Commissioner, Vice President Palmares, thank you for that acknowledgement of the hard work that we all have collectively done to move this issue along. So again, please mark your calendars for May fifth at four P M. And I want to thank you in advance for your support for this resolution.
Yes, I thank you as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill?
Yep, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo Vice President Palmares' comments, your comments, Mr. President, and congratulate Commissioner Cooper for her diligence on this issue. And we have a, as we all know, a very active advocate out there in the community who holds all of us to the, holds all of our feet to the fire. No pun intended. And, but that being said, I did want to congratulate and commend Commissioner Cooper for her continued work on this issue and taking this assignment on early in her career on the commission, on the board. When those of us who had been here for a little bit of time might not have been willing, she jumped right in. So thank you, Commissioner Cooper, for doing that. And thank you for making something very positive happen, which I think will have a great effect on the community. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yes, I would like to add something. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very, we're very fortunate that we have a commissioner on this board who's willing to undertake such a project, which is really very much needed in our community. So thank you, Commissioner Cooper, for doing such a wonderful job with this.
Absolutely. So if there are no other questions or comments from the board, commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Number Thirty-two, Forty-two, which are all commendations and in memoriam. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Here and now, I would like to be added to thirty-four and thirty-five. Thirty-five is still pending, but I'd like to be added to thirty-four and thirty-five.
Good happy to join you in thirty-four, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Number thirty-five and thirty-six were pending, but we did receive, I did receive an email from Debbie Marvel late today that they were on the agenda, and I no longer believe they're pending. And if anyone would like to join with me, I'd be happy to have them do so. And Jeff Tittle has done an outstanding job, and I don't know what the Sierra Club is going to do without him. I've been a member of the Sierra Club as long as I can think of, and he does such a great job. Gray Russell is retiring as from the Sustainability Officer of the Township of Montclair, and the work he does on environmental issues is unbelievable. So I can't believe these two people, who are so necessary because of what they do, are retiring. It's just terrible that they're not going to be fulfilling these roles, which are so important. They are both fantastic individuals. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, I would like to ask Commissioner Siebel if she would like to make that by accommodation. I'm quite sure everyone would acclamation.
I'd be very happy. And which one are you talking about, Commissioner Johnson?
Thirty-four and thirty-five.
I'd love to have everybody join me on thirty-four and thirty-five. They're two important, two very, very important commendations.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Vice President Palmares and a second from Commissioner Siebel to take Resolutions Thirty through Forty-two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Siebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yeah.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any added starters?
Uh, Mr. President, we have none.
All right. Let's move to board committees. Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Any legislative reports? Any written communications? Any unfinished business? Any new business? So let's move to public comment. Okay, Madam Clerk? We're going to move to public comment on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration, and they also have had the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, at this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question, and be reminded that you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. So at this time, we're only accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, our Public Information Officer, will begin this public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
All right, Mr. President. We do have some written correspondence, the email. And the first comment is from John Davenport, Professor of Philosophy at Fordham University. I would kindly ask for a response from the county commissioners, the county executives, the relevant people in the public health office, and computing personnel to the attached op-ed. In a recent op, the title is, by John Davenport, is Online Vaccine Appointments: Design Idency on Full Display. In a recent op-ed, the editors of the progress rightly complained that for weeks, New Jerseyans have spent hours on their computers going from site to site, repeatedly hitting the refresh button in hopes that they will hit the page at the precise moment when new slots open up for COVID vaccine. More onward, they note that, as a result, many of us are registered on several different state, county, and local business sites. For example, we know people got vaccinated only because they kept getting on SS County site at the exact morning and hour when it was refreshed with new openings each day. How quickly can one type then becomes a key factor? The editors are right. Heads should roll for this failure to design a single coordinated portal for the state. Everyone is familiar with waiting in line, many different contexts, and many different contexts, from a store checkout to a concert opening. But many people do not realize there is a simple science for designing these methods of allocating slots, queuing systems in Britain. It, queuing system is the Britain term for it. For example, many companies now offer to give you a callback when your turn on a help line comes up, so you don't have to wait fifty minutes on hold listening to their music, or these days, more likely, their ads. There's also plenty of work in ethical theory on how to make queuing systems fair. So that, for example, they do not exclude a recent immigrant who lacks a privileged network of saved friends to tell her when her CVS or Walgreens opens up to asleep few slots for ninety seconds before they're all booked. Here, an easy comparison, remember the race to register for college classes? The moment the system opens for your cohort, sometimes it's seven A M., so that you fall asleep in your afternoon classes? That is in the past, not at all colleges, except those with the stupidest administrators for the simple reason that it's easy to design a system that collects all students' requests for classes within an ample period of time over a couple of days, including their rank, order preferences, and then matches them in an available slot using a lottery for courses for which there are more available requests than available seats. A halfway decent system will also keep a waiting list in case you lost out, but a place opens up. The balance of this email will be read into the record at a later time.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. We do have someone in the Charlo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. Someone just called in the queue waiting to speak. Do I put it through now or wait till after?
Uh, Charlo, let me read this last one, and then we can go back to the caller.
Very good, thank you.
Dear Freeholders, this is from Frank Guyer. Dear Freeholders, nine people are on hunger strike in ICE detention in your jail, desperate to be released because of the clearly unsafe conditions. In the midst of the COVID-nineteen pandemic in May, Hugh Hun, a forty-nine-year-old refugee from Vietnam, was transferred from local law enforcement to ICE custody as a direct transfer. Then he was detained at SS County Correctional Facility in Newark, New Jersey, for a conviction from over thirty years ago that he's already served time for. Hugh, who was a caretaker of his elderly father, was ripped away from his family by ICE. Then he was transferred by ICE even further away to Louisiana. Now he's been deported to Vietnam. Our calls for individualized support for Hugh is also a call for all immigrants and refugees to be free. Attorney General, Annual Immigrant Trust Directive for, Report for 2019 revealed that SS County leads all counties in New Jersey in providing ICE access to people who are detained, notifying ICE of upcoming individual releases, and holding ICE individuals for ICE beyond their eligible release. The other counties aren't even as close. SS is easily the most ICE collaborating county in New Jersey. How can you allow this? I would like a written response as to what each of you have to say about this. I believe it must stop. I demand you immediately halt all intakes from ICE in the interest of public health and that you work to responsibly in your contract with ICE altogether. A Biden administration won't change the fact that ICE cannot be trusted regardless of which party controls the presidency. Last year, sixty-one immigrants rights organization called on SS County to end its ICE contract. These are not just radical groups. The list includes American Friends Service Committee, Doctors for Camp Closure, Faith in New Jersey, New York State Youth Leadership Council, and the Unidad Latina on Axion in New Jersey. SS County's number one talking point regarding keeping the ICE contract is the question- Essex County's number one talking point regarding keeping the ICE contract is the question of where people will be transferred if the contract ends. ICE answered that question. It will keep people in New Jersey. They're already looking for up to nine hundred more beds while organizations like Salvation Army, Social Justice, and the A C L U are fighting to release people from New Jersey prisons due to the threat of COVID nineteen. ICE is working to put them back in your jail. ICE has been making space in these past weeks through transfers and deportations. Essex County has profited from the system for far too long. You need to stop depending on the commodification of black and brown bodies to generate revenue. Sincerely, Frank Gueye. Okay, that is the end of the written, um, emails. Uh, Chalo, do you have someone waiting?
I do. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the caller waiting is Gwen Franklin. Uh, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Good evening, um, Commissioners. This is Gwen Franklin. How are you? Great. I can't hear you. You're muted. Um, my, my question is mostly about COVID-related items for the county. And is, do you have a list of items that is COVID, that falls under COVID-related that someone can look at and they can apply for a program to get COVID relief? Even though they did not have COVID, but is COVID-related from the federal government, from their dollars, that the extra dollars that you received? The next question is, um, what is the amount of the federal dollars that you did receive for COVID-related issues? And also before and after the Biden administration? And what is the amount of federal dollars that each division was allocated to receive related to COVID-related issues? And items and supplies? Um, and what is the protocol for cleaning and dis- disinfecting the county buildings that are, that are now occupied? And in, in reference to definitely three-twenty, three-twenty-one, University Avenue, Newark? Um, and what's the, the amount, the highest, since three-twenty and three-twenty-one have the highest COVID cases? Um, I'm really curious to see, um, the amount of P P E that was distributed to them? Since every time I seem to ask for a box of gloves or mask, um, uh, uh, it's very difficult. I'm getting backlash. And definitely, um, they said I should just wear one mask for the whole week. That's what my supervisor told me. Um, and I asked if they can give us a box of masks because it's only two units that's occupying the building, the building.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Franklin.
And there's been a high risk of death. And with the saliva test for the, for the COVID testing, um, is it possible that they can supply alcohol wipes that's supposed to come with the testing? And people who are getting, who are having COVID? There's no quarantine. There's no protocol. And, and I'd like to know, how can you help with this? That's it. Thank you.
Chalo, are there any additional callers?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, we do have, uh, two additional callers that are in the process of being screened. Um, we, um, we can hold for, for a minute, maybe while they pop up in the, uh, in the, in the screening queue so I could push them through their meeting, but I can't push them through to the meeting right now because we're still taking their information.
Mr. President, uh, do you want to, um, um, wait for them to be finished being screened?
We'll, we'll give them a couple of minutes. Sure.
Would, would it be, um, inappropriate, um, to, um, maybe go to a Freeholder comment session? Uh, I'm not sure. And then come back to the callers? Or would you just like to wait and complete this set?
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. I was informed that, uh, we do not have anyone waiting to speak. The callers were disconnected. They did not call back, so they hung up, so we can move forward.
Mr. President?
All right. Commissioners? Any comments?
I do, Mr. President.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaris?
Thank you. Just a reminder that, uh, on Thursday, April twenty-second, which is tomorrow at nine A M., Essex County will have its emergency food distribution. As you know, this is a weekly event. Tomorrow's event will take place at Essex County Independence Park. It's Van Buren Street in Newark. And we'll be there rain or shine until, uh, supplies last, as usually about five hundred or so. And, uh, they go quick. So we encourage you to share that with your, uh, contacts. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Anything you would like to say at this time? Okay, I'd like to make one comment in terms of, you know, something that we've all been watching play out for the last year, uh, and watching the trial, uh, intently on the George Floyd, uh, murder. Uh, so while I'm encouraged and a lot of other people are encouraged by the verdict, um, which is really the only verdict that a, uh, a conscious jury could possibly come back with, was guilty on all counts. Uh, but thank God for the video. You know, those young folks weren't out there and didn't videotape that, uh, for, for the whole world to see. I shudder to think if we would have gotten that, that outcome. Uh, but I'm happy to see it. It was a great verdict for that particular case. Uh, there are a lot of other cases still pending that are going on right now. So let's see if we can move the needle where we all must stay vigilant. We all must work together, uh, for the common good of humanity. Man, we have to do it collectively. That's my comment. Commissioners?
May I add to that? First of all, uh, President Richardson, I think that the release that you wrote was absolutely wonderful. And I was, uh, I received a, uh, an email from Chalo Malumba today about a release for the entire board, and when I was very much, uh, in favor of our having such a release because I was so pleased with the verdict yesterday, and we must continue to work for civil rights for everyone in this country. All of us together must work for what this country needs to do, what we need to accomplish. So I hope that you'll all join in, uh, supporting this, uh, position which the commissioners will take. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Siebel.
Mr. President, Madam Clerk, we do have a caller. I'm sorry to interrupt. A caller did come through who is available to speak now. Is it okay if I put him through?
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, the caller is David Weiner. Mr. Weiner, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, my name is David Weiner. President of local tenant on C D B O, uh, Essex County Division of Welfare. And my question is, is it an open request today to the county for the nineteen, uh, uh, twenty nineteen Field of Board Committee report? I had done one, uh, for the twenty, uh, eighteen Field of Board reports. And they, they, I was told that there were no meetings and no reports were made. And I'd like to know why, since it's required by the, 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 uh, the county's, uh, rules and regulations.
So, Mr. Weiner, I think you, you, you were kind of going in and out, so I didn't really, did anybody clearly hear what he said?
Uh, Mr. President, I believe he said he was referring to, uh, the Freeholder or Commissioner Committee, uh, uh, reports for, you know, the different committees that the board has. I believe that's what he was referring to. And, 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 uh, through you, Mr. President, as our, our practice and policy, we will respond, uh, to any of his questions that he's, uh, presenting now in writing.
Mr. Weiner? Okay. Did he disconnect? Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, everyone. Everyone stay safe. And if you haven't downloaded the Essex County Commissioner app, please do so. There's a lot of good information on that app. One particular place you can get a lot of information. Please download the app. Commissioners? Yes.
Mr. President, is that app found on the Apple Store and the Google?
It, it certainly is on both places, the Apple Store and Google. So you have no excuse. If you have an iPhone or an Android, you can get it. Mr. Jackson, I see you hiding your face behind the screen.
Mr. President, I hear, I hear all the cool kids on it.
I have it right here on my phone, Mr. President.
All right. There you go. Listen.
I have it.
Outstanding. I have two phones and I have them on both.
You're excellent.
Definitely.
Commissioners, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Move second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good night, everybody. Stay well.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.